Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular meeting of council with us. Nope, sorry, that's my speaker again, my bad. Test, test, there we are. Welcome to our regular meeting council. We did have an in camera session earlier. It is six oh three P M on Wednesday, September twenty fifth, and I'll call this meeting order. And I'd like to start with our land acknowledgement. And the town of Midland recognizes located on land, which is traditional and treaty territory of the Nishnabik people now known as the Chipewa Tri Council comprised of Boslay First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. The territories within pre Confederation Treaty five and Treaty sixteen included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homeland of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. I now like to deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area was located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main entrance, the double last doors there, make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit. Right here behind councillor Ball. Up the stairs, check the door for heat before opening, and if it's safe, exit to the second floor, turning right and proceed out the door in front of you. Boschums are conveniently located on the second floor and an elevator is located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone exhibiting violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Members of the audience are to maintain order and quiet and are not to address council except with the permission of the chair. All cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices which emit a sound are to be turned off and set to non audible, and I will do that myself right about now. No person shall display signs or placards, applaud participants or debate any engage or engage in any conversations electronic otherwise or behave in a way that may disrupt the proceedings of council. For anyone requiring a hearing assist device, please advise our clerk, and she will arrange with our I T staff to provide you with the device. Councils are recorded, council meetings are recorded by Zoom and are posted to the town's YouTube site. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel fifty-three. Individual recording, broadcasting, or streaming of the meeting by the public or any member is not permitted without the express consent of the clerk and all those present. That being said, council, I could ask for a moment of silent reflection before we get underway this evening. Thank you very much. Did. Sped Reddit. Alright, so as we did have a closed session. Pardon me.
Declarations of conflict of interest first?
Yes, thank you very much. I got sidetracked here. Uh, any council, any declarations of conflict of interest relating to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, if that perspective changes, just throw your hand up at the time and make the declaration and we'll, we'll deal with it accordingly. Uh, we were, we've got a motion here arising from our closed meeting discussions moved by councillor Patel, seconded by deputy mayor Prost, that further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and confidential criteria based matrix provided at the closed meeting session of council held September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Today, regarding appointments to various committees, council hearing confirms the following appointments for a term consistent with the term of council. It's got a couple of years left. On the Midland Active Transportation Committee, I'd like to welcome Brian McKell and John Wilcox. Congratulations and thank you for putting your name forward, your names forward for this committee. And trying to fill the big vacancy left by now councillor major. And the Committee of Adjustment and Property Standards, Brian McKell, again, thank you very much, Brian. Uh, as I alluded to, uh, any times, he's forgotten more about the job than most of us will learn in our term. And further, the clerks department be directed to amend and repost respective committee and boards with available appointments, which we still have for this council term. And further that the verbal update provided by the chief administrative officer by law twenty seventeen dash seventeen being by law to establish a human resources standing committee be repealed. And that the bylaw be presented at the next regular meeting of council scheduled for Wednesday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Council, that just causes a high level, high level summary of our in camera session for the public. All those in favor? Any opposed? Is carried. Next, we have a motion moved by councillor Major, seconded by councillor Bald, that council receive his information and confirm the directions as outlined in the confidential verbal report and update provided by the legal and risk advisor and the chief administrative officer at the closed meeting session of council held September twenty, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four with respect to the stormwater property damage, Tiffin Park and Javelin Co-op at six fourteen William Street. Council, we've had a discussion in camera, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next, move by deputy mayor Prost, seconded by councillor Ball, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for twenty, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four be approved. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Next, move by councillor Reese, seconded by councillor Patel, that the items and related recommendations contained within September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four consent agenda, as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of the following items that are being pulled. Item ten point four point three C S R twenty twenty-four dash eighty, the ad hoc parking committee update. Item ten point four point five C S R twenty twenty-four dash eighty-three, joint O D, O B C Building Services Agreement with the Town of Penintang Machine. Item ten point four point six C S R twenty twenty-four dash eighty-four, records of and information management policy. And item ten point four point seven C S R twenty twenty-four dash eighty-five, Midland Fire Department Feasibility Study Executive Steering Committee in Terms of Reference, which all will be considered under section seventeen, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration, including presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Council, this is your opportunity to speak to any other matters on the consent agenda before we pass this. Any questions, comments? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I do have a couple of, uh, questions that I passed on and said they were going to be announced or replied here. And the first one is just in our minutes on, um, September fourth meeting, uh, we did announce the Little Lake Park ban shell. It was going to proceed, and I just wondered whether there was going to be any public announcement about it so that our constituents will know what's going on.
This looks like a Mitch question. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, through Mayor Gordon to councillor McDonald, that's, there is a funding component to it, and part of the funding is a requirement to do some announcements in media, so the project is just kicking off. If anybody's been down to Little Lake, they'll see that we've removed the old stage. Uh, and there'll be an announcement coming out shortly through our communications, whether it be social media, website, something like that. So there, there will be something coming in the future.
That's exciting. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or will I proceed, Mayor Gordon? Okay, thank you. Just a couple of more. The council information package on ten point three point one. There was a, a letter there. Somebody was very enthused about our Palm Beach bus, and I just wondered, uh, what the follow-up will be to that letter.
Another Mr. Sobel question.
Yeah, again, through you, Mayor Gordon, councillor McDonald. Um, there will be a report coming later this fall on the, as a follow-up to that pilot program that will outlay the success of it and if we recommend proceeding with it. So stay tuned, there'll be more to come on that.
Again, one more, and I do believe it's for Mr. Sobel, through you. I'm picking on him tonight. Um, it's in regards to the council information package, which by the way, I really like receiving it in the PDF H T M or whatever it is format. It's in regards to the letter we received from the Simcoe County District School Board regarding parking. Their last paragraph says they look forward to receiving feedback about how we can work collaboratively with the town. And I suspect we've, we're following up on that. Is it by correspondence or? Uh, I just want to comment that all their suggestions were the responsibility of the town. I didn't see any of the suggestions that they had for their solutions.
Through you, Mayor Gordon. Um, so I can tag their letter. I did read their letter, um, from the traffic calming side of things. I thought it was good. It was good to have that support from the school board. Again, something you'll see from me probably in the winter time, um, will be some additional pedestrian crossings in school zones coming ahead. Um, I'd like to do a swap with some master plan ones, and I'd like council's approval to do that. Um, and that letter just further helps that justification. So there'll be more to come on that. But from the parking side of things, I think I'll let Steve kind of talk on that. He, he was involved with Monday's Bay and, uh, on, on Sixth Street.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, through your worship, um, we had multiple discussions with the school board as well as the public school dealing with Sixth Street and the, and the revision to that parking in that area. Uh, council made the decision to modify that, that parking restrictions on that street to try and make it safe, safer for the students. So uh, we switched the permitted parking to the school side of Sixth Street so that way kids weren't having to cross the streets. Uh, in terms of trying to encourage the school board to have more on onsite parking, the town is open to those discussions to having them with the school board to try and assist as best we can. Uh, they do just terms of, uh, Monday's Bay alone. That's what I'm talking about is they've, they've got significant property there. And when we did bring it up originally, they didn't want to cut down on the playground area for the students. Um, so if the school board is, uh, is, is wanting to, the, the town to assist in that, we can definitely have more discussions. If council wants us to continue to have those discussions with the school board to encourage them to modify their on onsite parking, then, uh, council can give us the direction and we'll start those conversations again with them. Uh, we did, as part of that initial, uh, response, we did send, um, correspondence to, uh, Mr. Talbot, who's the, uh, what's his title? The trustee, we never heard back from, from him, but the school boards were, uh, were very open in having those discussions with us. So uh, we're here to work with them. If they want us to, to, to assist, we can. Bylaw staff with that particular school have been doing increased enforcement to try and get, uh, parents used to the revised parking area and trying to have it so it's not as, as congested. So we'll continue to do, uh, patrols in not only that school, but other school sites as well to ensure that the kiss and rides and the prohibited parking are, are being enforced. Thank you.
Just a comment. I, for one councillor, would encourage us to contact, encourage the town to, excuse me, I would like the town to encourage the school board on increasing onsite parking. Since they're asking for our feedback on how they can work collaboratively, I think we should present that to them. That would be a big help. If it has to go through a formal motion, we can talk about that later.
Through your worship to councillor McDonald, if that is what you are proposing, then you can either do it by way of notice of motion or bring a motion forward at the next meeting that you would like that direction. This was on the consent agenda, so there's no direction from consent items.
Some good news on that story is we did receive, um, a, a letter from, you know, one of the proponents of, uh, these changes who has noticed this marked difference since, uh, the keratin stick approach of enforcement has been undertaken by bylaw. So it's good that we're, uh, finding some peace in the neighborhood for, for the residents. So we'll keep up the work and look forward to a forthcoming notice of motion. Councillor Emeritus, did I see your finger raised? Any?
Uh, was ten point four two pulled by anybody or is that? Okay, I just wanted a, a comment on the, uh, the pre, uh, pre submission review process. I think it's, um, very, um, very beneficial to the, uh, developers, um, to, um, submit their applications and before they're, um, uh, finalized to have a review, um, by staff, I believe that that's the way the wording is so that they're complete, so they don't come incomplete. Is that correct? Maybe Mr. Parkinson can just, uh, uh, fill this in a little bit on that, but I do see the benefits of this, um, as a positive.
Uh, through your worship, yeah, so provincial government has made some significant changes throughout the planning world in the last couple of years, as councils aware. Uh, one of the more recent ones was that, um, you can no longer require applications to go through a pre consultation process. So it used to be before you pass a bylaw, if you wanted to submit a formal application, you were required to come through our pre-con process. So with the province now saying that you have to provide, um, an opportunity for people to still pre consult. We looked at our pre-con bylaw, so it's proposed to be repealed, and we're replacing it with this new pre submission review. And what we're looking to do is to try and create incentives for the development community to still come through that process. So what we're proposing is that, so the fee right now for a pre submission review under our current fee bylaws is thirty-one hundred dollars. So if you come in with your formal application within a specified timeframe, you would then get that refunded back to you, uh, once you request it. So the idea is that if we give them that, that incentive, they're coming through the pre-con, we have lots of time to look at the file and provide our comments on it, not only from planning, but from engineering. And we've seen that on one, one particular file that came through where, uh, it wasn't so much the planning comments they were worried about. It was the engineering and servicing comments that they wanted to make sure they got from Mitch and his team, uh, and as well as O L T appeals. If we have an opportunity to review it and comment on it before formal submission comes in, we reduce the likelihood of it being appealed through the O L T. And so, you know, that's, that's one reason why, um, manager, uh, planning and, uh, and the senior planner, they did a good job looking through this and, and talking to the other departments and getting feedback. Uh, and this is what we felt was probably the best avenue to go down to try and make sure that we still encourage people to come through the pre-con process. Uh, so that we can make sure we give them detailed comments and perhaps manage our planning can provide a little bit more detail on this briefly about just, you know, the meeting and providing the comments ahead of time and the benefits to that.
Thank you, Steve. Um, through you, Mayor Gordon, to councillor Emeritus. Um, as Steve mentioned, yeah, this is essentially a two, two phased improvement or two step improvement in that it's a process improvement to help us uh, work with the development industry, um, and provide them comments ahead of time so they can attend the meeting and discuss matters that are relevant to them rather than going through the meetings and discussing everything and, and then running out of time to address the things that they're interested in. And also, like Steve mentioned, the changes introduced by the provincial government really sort of tied our hands as to pre consultation or consultation. So as to encourage developers to go through the consultation process and encourage that sort of a collaborative approach, we thought revamped to our, um, what, what is currently called the pre consultation process, we're rebranding it, we're calling it pre submission review. So as the name suggests, you, it's a, you submit, we review it before you submit, and then you do everything that we said is a good idea for you to do. And then once you've done all those things, you submit, your application is deemed complete, and we're, um, off to the races to get approval under the Planning Act. So it's, um, and we think that's, um, that's going to be beneficial for the town and the, and the development industry.
That, that's great to hear. Um, just one question through, through Mayor Gordon. But is this, um, has, has any municipality or city have done this before? Has it been done or is this something you, you guys crafted up on, on, on your own? Uh, I think it's a really good step that we're taking here.
Uh, through you, Mayor Gordon. Um, so the current process is not all that different. Sorry, the proposed process is not all that different from the current process. Um, we've scaled it down a little bit, um, added some transparency to it by providing this guide, this guide, uh, that everybody can see and get educated on it, um, including members of the public. Um, we put some timelines to it as well. And so it's, uh, it's put some onus on the developer to come prepared, but also puts onus on us to make sure that we go through the process quickly. Uh, we've done a, we've done a review of our adjacent municipalities and, um, just looking at their websites doesn't seem like, um, very many have been updated to reflect the legislative changes. So we are sort of ahead of the curve on this. Other larger municipalities are, have already changed their language. Um, I'm not sure as to which municipality providing sort of a, any financial incentive. Um, I don't think the larger municipalities have to worry about that too, too much. Um, it's more so with us that, you know, smaller municipalities that need to be more, um, tactical in a response to the changes in legislation.
Follow up?
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I asked the question, when does it become in effect or is it being used now?
Through Mayor Gordon, so we currently have a pre consultation bylaw in effect, although that, as our staff report mentions, that bylaw doesn't have legislative merit anymore. So we're requesting that that bylaw be repealed, and we implement this new process, and the implementation of this new process will occur, uh, once the staff report is approved and endorsed by council. So we can start using it as of tomorrow.
Thank you.
Super. I got a couple of comments on things we haven't pulled, uh, you know, the ten point four point one, which was, uh, our staff's ability to update us on bill one eighty-five, the Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Faster Act. That's a great summary and really timely. We're seeing councils, uh, all around the province trying to, you know, get these briefings from their staff, and we're, we're still pretty ahead of the curve. So it's, it's great. We just got one at, uh, county, uh, with the county planners, and, you know, they have a whole army of folks, and we have our, our three to four, uh, you know, mighty team here. So it's great to see the, the update, the, you know, the impacts on it and how it can support responsible growth in Midland, which is something we desperately need. So that's really good to see, the planning submission. I love the process. We're also monetizing it, so tire kickers, uh, won't be getting that money back. So if you just spend staff's time to go through all the, the effort and, you know, never follow through and pursue it any further, uh, we've at least done a cost recovery on that's, you know, as we get some of our best heads in Midland wrapping around these uh, whimsical products that never actually come to fruition, then we've actually done a bit of cost recovery. So I think it's a great approach to it. Um, I don't think we see a lot of tire kicking in town, uh, with development these days, but if it's good to protect us on that and make sure our costs are captured. And then that kind of transitions nicely into, um, ten point four point eight, the recovery for expenses and response to incidents and accidents. This was more cash we were leaving on the table. Uh, we were just eating this, uh, which means when I say we, I mean the rate payers of Midland. Uh, so this is a staff creation. Uh, this wasn't driven by council. Staff are always looking for ways to try and bring in new revenue sources, uh, especially paying for things that are no fault of ours. You know, it wasn't through anything that we did or didn't do to cause this damage, and yet we're left holding the bag after. Uh, so I, this is a really responsible approach, and, um, I've had nothing but good feedback, um, from, you know, I put it out there, I don't know wherever it was a week ago. And it's all good feedback. So again, staffer to be commended for finding their own ways to try and pull the very small levers we have in the municipality to, to bring revenue and try and, you know, recoup our costs of running the organization. So that's awesome. And so that wasn't pulled. We're not really going to have a deep dive on it, but for those interested, our agendas are published. Uh, we can advance and they're online now and in perpetuity. So if you want to do a deeper dive and read some of these reports, please do. Any other questions, council, before we call the question? Alright, so the motion that's on the floor is basically consent agenda, uh, with the exception of the four reports that are pulled and we'll deal with later. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Alright, so moved by councillor Ball, seconded by councillor Bald, the council resolve into the committee, the whole, all those in favor? Any opposed? We're carried, and we are now in committee, the whole, and I will pass the chair over to deputy mayor.
Okay, if you're following along, we're at number twelve, um, public meeting, and we have one. I would like to call the public, the public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held pursuant to section thirty-four of the Planning Act to consider a town initiated zoning bylaw amendment. The proposed amendment is a housekeeping exercise which is to improve the day-to-day use and application of the zoning bylaw. As such, the proposed amendment affects all lands within the town of Midland. In accordance with the Planning Act, a person who does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or does not make a written submission before the bylaw is passed or an approval is given will not be entitled to appeal the decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal Tribunal and may not be added as a party to a hearing on an appeal to the tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable, reasonable grounds to do so. The purpose of this public meeting is to inform the public about the proposed housekeeping amendment and provide an opportunity for members of the public to provide feedback. No council decision is being made at this public meeting. Rather, a recommendation staff will be, will be received by council at a later date. This is your opportunity to speak and provide input, and council encourages you to do so. I would now like to call upon Thomas Weir's, Weir's, sorry, Weir's Ba, managing of planning services and Andy Warzen, senior planner, to present the proposed, I can't do this, to prevent the, present the proposed amendments, confirm notification, and to know any correspondence received. Go ahead. And welcome.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Um, I can confirm that notice, um, a public meeting was issued as prescribed in the Planning Act. And today we have received some correspondence about the proposed amendments, and we will report, report those to you through, through the presentation. So, um, and so I'll just get right into it. Um, good evening, members of council and members of the public in attendance. My name is Thomas Weir's Ba. Um, or if you're feeling brave, it's Tomas Weir's Ba in Polish. Uh, presenting with me tonight is Andy Warzen, our senior planner. I'll start the presentation and then hand it off to Andy. About a third of the way through, uh, this presentation is being given, uh, as part of a statutory public meeting on a municipality initiated, uh, housekeeping zoning bylaw amendment. I'll try to keep it, uh, light with the technical lingo. So in tonight's, um, next slide, please. Thank you. In tonight's presentation, we'll go over, um, why we need a housekeeping amendment. Uh, we'll also discuss the project work plan and timelines, and then we'll get into the details of the proposed amendments themselves. Uh, then we will be available to take questions about the proposed amendments, and then we will be here to listen to, uh, any public feedback being presented. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a fairly technical, uh, slide, um, and I would like to start talking about, um, housekeeping amendments themselves and why we need them. As the name suggests, housekeeping amendments are done from time to time to address, uh, issues that come up as we use the document on a day-to-day basis. Uh, this includes addressing inconsistent language on clear definitions and standards that are, uh, not intent, not, um, not serving their intended purpose. Uh, we also do housekeeping amendments to address changes in legislation, legislation, sorry, which is the case with this particular housekeeping amendment. Uh, specifically, we are proposing to amend our zoning bylaw to comply with bill twenty-three being the, uh, More Homes Built Faster Act. Uh, bill twenty-three introduced legislation that permits up to three dwelling units on a fully serviced residential lot or up to two additional dwelling units, uh, on a fully serviced residential lot where a residential unit already exists. We call this three units as of right legislation. Uh, bill twenty-three also introduced legislation that prohibits municipalities from restricting these additional residential units from being built on fully serviced lots. Um, that's just really, very, uh, two high levels, um, highlights from bill twenty-three. It did a, a number of things. Um, housekeeping amendments, however, are not intended to introduce, uh, new regulations or address matters that are not already addressed or spoken to in a zoning bylaw. Um, this is why housekeeping supportive regulations that introduce new build forms and new permissions are not being contemplated as part of this housekeeping, where rather they will be introduced as part of, uh, either a sec, uh, it'll be introduced as phase two of this project being a standalone, uh, zoning bylaw amendment, and council will receive a report on that, uh, at a future date. Next slide, please. So as shown on the screen, um, we have made significant progress on updating our zoning bylaw with tonight's statutory public meeting being a major milestone. Uh, the next step in the project is for staff to receive feedback from the public and our stakeholders, uh, about, uh, the proposed amendments. And what we're going to do is we're going to report what we heard, and we call this a what we heard report. The purpose of the what we hear report is to check in with members of the public and stakeholders to ensure that we, um, heard everybody correctly and that we, that we understood that feedback that was, uh, provided. In addition to the what we heard report, we'll also receive, uh, release a draft copy of the amending bylaw, um, so that the public can review it. Um, and really the goal of releasing these two items together is to provide the public additional opportunities to get informed and if necessary, get involved in shaping their community. So with that, I'll turn it to Andy Warzen to talk about, um, some of the key amendments that we're proposing.
Thank you, Thomas. Good evening, deputy mayor Prost, mayor, members of council, fellow staff, public. Um, as Thomas has indicated here, we're currently going through the housekeeping exercises, exercise. Sorry, if you want to go to the next slide, you can. Sorry, Sarah. Uh, this housekeeping exercise is going to result in approximately thirty-seven to forty changes to our current zoning bylaw. As you can see noted on the screen, kind of highlights point by point some of the items specifically we're reviewing, reviewing. Uh, there are two, uh, additional charts that are included in the presentation, which highlights the sections, the current zone.
There are two additional charts that are included in the presentation, which highlights the sections, the current zone regulations, proposed regulations and why we're changing it. To kind of help and ease through that process. So and I believe it was included as part of the staff report. So council does have that. Those charts available to them. They wanted to review. Similarly, those charts were included in the notice that went out to the public. So the public has also seen one of the, there is two charts. I'll explain the second one, but the first one. Is all those highlighted sections was included for the public. So to kind of to assist staff, we thought we would highlight maybe five key points. For the housekeeping exercise, instead of going through the all these points by points. I'm going to just talk about kind of the most significant items for the housekeeping exercise. So at the current moment, we're going to be amending some definitions for the residential built forms. In order to alleviate some constraints as it relates for redevelopment of properties. As a particularly relates to duplexes and triplexes. So we've just changed some of the wording. So it's a little more easier to transition that built form. The big thing here, as not Thomas had noted through bill twenty three is amendment to our second unit regulations. We're going to be amending the term, actually removing the term second unit and replacing with additional dwelling units. To be consistent with bill twenty three. In addition to that, we've also are going to be implementing or proposing some additional regulations. As it relates to the built form of these additional dwelling residential units. In particularly also when it's constructed in a detached building. We've, we're going to be proposing those. And again, you can see those in the chart. We've also, as it relates to our downtown core commercial zone, we're amending the definition of accessory dwelling units to make it clear distinction between accessory dwelling units. And additional residential units because there are very different permissions. So we're going to be changing that definition for the accessory dwelling units to ensure that. In those instances on our downtown King Street properties that have these mixed uses with commercial on the ground, residential on the upper. You know, this definition is to more to align to ensure that those additional accessory dwelling units are considered secondary. To the ground floor commercial. In addition to that, we've noted that we've had some. Issues applying some of our regulations in the downtown core for those properties that front on to King Street. When it relates to having accessory dwelling units added in there. So we've added a couple, we've tweaked the wording more or less of the existing regulation to make it clear. Because we have been running into some situations with redevelopment of certain properties where they were proposing maybe more units on the upper floors. Or adding more floors to accommodate more residential uses. We are also looked at the home occupation regulations. We've, we're proposing to amend the definition of the home occupation to further. Indicate that the home occupation is to be operated by the actual individual that resides in the property. In addition to that, we've also included, we're looking to revise some of the existing regulations of the home occupations. To again, to represent that the home occupation is to be conducted by the individual residing on the property. But also lend the opportunity to have up to two staff that do not reside on the property to be able to. Work for that home occupation also. And at the end of the day, the whole point of that is to also achieve that. You know, the residential character in the surrounding neighborhood is still is maintained as residential. You know, you drive by the house, it looks like a normal home. However, there might be a home occupation in there. So that was another item. We, so I, at the start of my little presentation there, I mentioned that we have two charts. So the first chart was was highlighting all these changes, but based on comments that we've received from stakeholders. Through that notice notification, we have a, there was some suggestions about looking at our driveway regulations. Specifically as it relates to residential lots. You know, we're trying to be taking a proactive approach here, understanding that there's going to be these new permissions for additional residential units on residential properties. Parking is always an item. Technically, you don't actually need additional parking for those residential units, those new ones. But the reality is we're going to have that. So we've also included a definition of driveway because our zoning by law actually doesn't have a definition. And we've also included some regulations which allow for additional driveways. Corner lots, through lots, laneways. And there's some criteria that you a property would have to meet in order to be permitted to have additional driveway driveway. So that's another item that we've included. Based on the notification, I would like to note that I did receive correspondence from a member of the public. Who had requested that council and staff consider increasing the height of residential fences. As it particularly relates when they're abutting an apartment building. So that was something that we had on there. I don't want to duplicate what Thomas has noted here, but previously, but we do have a what we heard report that will be coming forward in November. Along with that, we'll have a track change version of zoning bylaws so council and the public can see. Current what we're proposing new changes and we'll bring that forward in November. Other than that, I concludes my presentation. I don't have any more to add. But I am here for to answer any questions or comments from council and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the meeting to comments from the public. If you wish to make a comment. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the public record. Seeing no, seeing nobody. Oh, sorry. Well, hang on. That was. You're not the public. As there's no further comments from the public or there wasn't any comments from the public regarding the proposed housekeeping amendment. I will now call this public meeting to an end. So I have a motion here that staff report CSR dash twenty twenty four dash eighty two zoning by law, housekeeping exercise, phase one, public meeting. Dated September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four be received for information. Can I have a mover and a second or please? Councillor East. And seconded by councillor Major. All in favor? Carried. So at this time, I can open the floor to any councillors that have any comments. Councillor Major.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Before you called for the vote, that's when you would would have asked for. Comments from council. So we have a mover and seconder. So now that the motion is on the floor, council can make comments and then once the comments are received, we just call for another vote.
So just repeat it. So I have a mover and a seconder. So it's on the floor. And we have questions and comments from council. Councillor Major.
Through Deputy Mayor Post, Andy. So really. I'm reading this as basically you're going to streamline it. Because I was on committee of adjustment and property lines. So the way this is going to go, it's going to speed the process up for people and it won't be. As many coming to that committee as before, because you guys are going to probably. Get things rolling and it's just going to be a faster, better system.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Prost to councillor Major. That's part of the 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 approach with the housekeeping exercise. Essentially, it's, you know, the day to day application. These are the items that we're running into that are causing us some conflict and and making it kind of restrictive for individual and property owners to move forward with planning. Projects. So you're right, in one sense, this might help alleviate some items coming forward to the committee of adjustment. But also it's just to make our zoning by law a little more user friendly and help our community and, you know, larger developments in general.
Thank you.
Councillor Meredith.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Just a comment or. A question on the downtown core commercial zones on the. You mentioned, I know this is for information only and it's going to come back to us, but. You dive a little deeper in these fourplexes that. You're allowing to permit off of the not fronting on King. Are we are we looking at fourplex like residential units or the apartment units or? Or whatever the developer wants to develop. Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor Prost to councillor Meredith. Thank you for that. And I do apologize. I should have expanded on that a little further. So currently in the zoning by law, there are permissions for any properties in our downtown core that do not front on to King Street. They are allowed to have duplex, a triplex, semi-detached, believe it or not, townhouses and apartments. We're suggesting adding the fourplex because it seems to be the missing housing type that that, you know, we're reflecting everything else. Why wouldn't we reflect the the fourplex? So again, those resident, that fourplex permission. And all those other residential permissions are there already today. But it again, only applies to those shoulder streets is kind of what we refer to them, everything off of the King Street corridor.
Thank you. Just to follow up to that, is there, are there height restrictions for or are they for these fourplexes or? Is it based on how many levels of floors you can have, I guess, or how many?
Think you get what I'm trying to, thank you. Yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Yeah, so we would look for the zoning by law. It doesn't contain height restrictions already in the zone zoning by law for the downtown core. So we're not introducing any new height permissions, really. It's just what's currently permitted in there. Fourplexes can can take a variety of different forms, right? You could have two up on the top, two on the bottom. You could have up to four stories potentially, again, as long as you stay within the cap. But yeah, that's, we're not looking to change any of that right now.
Thank you.
Seeing no other hands up for questions or comments. You've heard the motion. All in favor? Unanimous, carried? Number thirteen presentations, we have none. Fourteen integrity commissioner, we have none. Deputations petitions, we have none. Committee, local board, delegation or memo, we have none. Number seventeen. Reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration. Seventeen point one CSR dash twenty twenty four dash eighty ad hoc parking committee update. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Councillor East, councillor Ball. Who pulled this motion? Would you like to speak to it first, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. So yeah, I did pull the. The report. I was on the ad hoc committee. And. When I read the report, it dates of fifty thousand dollars to set aside for a consultant. So. I do, I'll be in the committee, we were presented with a figure of twenty to twenty five thousand. And the reason why. Just to give you a little bit of background on on the, on on why we were recommending a consultant is. The committee was kind of, we were kind of running all over the place, didn't, couldn't really. Make do with the data or the information we were gathering. To see if this, if parking was feasible in our downtown with the numbers being presented. We didn't have great data. And going back, the committee asked for the report when these or a, yeah, report. About the the old parking meters that we had. But we found out there wasn't really in depth study on on parking in Midland. There was a small little bit of information on the the plan for the downtown big dig that 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 touched on a little bit of parking. It never really gave us the information and the committee was 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 trying to figure out where this, you know, the. The large number that the potential that this, the parking meters were going to generate. But that was, that was nowhere to be seen on paper. I think those were just hypotheticals. And it just evolved from there. So what I was trying to gather from the ad hoc committee is the feasibility of. Do little parking meters actually have a difference? You know, of income or an effect on for our capital infrastructure to be offset some of those costs. With what was gathered, really, I didn't have, I couldn't come up with any type of real suggestion whether we. We go forward with parking meters or just take a status quo. So that's why. The consultant got brought into the picture. To kind of give a council, because council is going to decide on on this eventually. To give us a broad view of of what is the potential of of, you know, are we going to be a deficit? Are we going to be? You know, or in a positive or a break even. So I think that information is key. We certainly don't want to go down the same path that we did with the previous meters. We don't want to make those mistakes. So to spend, it was, is suggested by twenty to twenty five thousand dollars. So I pulled the report because. There's a fifty thousand dollar ask here. Which. You know, I did talk to some councillors beforehand and that was kind of a big number for a consultant. So I just. Previous meeting and they did do a comparable with, I believe, an attain. They're having a parking study done and they're they're at thirty thousand dollars and around there. So. You know, I don't want to go from the, where we're making a decision of spending seven hundred thousand or six hundred thousand on parking meters and. You know, it's, it'll, it'll only cost us, not only, but I don't like paying a lot for a consultant, but I think this is. You know. A good spend now. I'm not sure if it's fifty thousand, but we could definitely, you know. Take staff recommendation here of a recommendation of fifty or we can put a cap on it and then if if. If they need to come back to us for the more money they they can, but I'll let everybody else comment on on it right now. So I'm kind of spinning my wheels, but. I think the, with that information, it would be helpful to determine whether. Our parking program will be successful or not. So, thank you.
Councillor Ball.
Thank you. Thank you for the background information as well because that eliminated a lot of questions I was going to ask you about this. So. My one question though is, has. I guess, a study or a conversation been had with other municipalities that do have parking? They have newer parking meters, older parking meters. Like, can we not gather this information from? Other municipalities that have these in place already without the cost of a consultant? That's my one question and I'm hesitant to dissolve this committee entirely. Because the entire point of the committee was to have the community have a voice to what was happening with parking, which is what they felt like they didn't have previously. So I think this is kind of a step in the opposite direction of that by hiring an external consultant to tell us what we need. And maybe leave the committee open if that's the the avenue that council decides to go down. That it's being presented back to the committee, like that they still have a purpose and that they're still. Using their voice and that's what I thought the entire point of the committee was to begin with. So are, is everyone on this committee on board with this?
Thank you, councillor Ball. I'll start off with the, with an answer here and then maybe Mr. Parkiston can can step in. So. The, the committee. If this report comes back, when this, if we we decide to go through a consultant. The decision will be, will be coming back to council. So the committee has recommended. To bring in a consultant and with those findings. We're, the committee won't re. If the consultant will present to the, to council because in the end, we have decisions. So we'll get a full report and on that report. Based decision on what direction we want to go. And if Mr. Parkiston can can elaborate on that.
Thank you. So the the committee passed the motion to.
Uh, thank you. So the, the committee passed the motion to, to hire the consultant. I think the committee has, has, while there's, there's some professionals down there that, that know their business and, and know their customers for parking. I think they've kind of gotten to the point where their, their, their expertise is, is now limited. The last parking study we did was in twenty twelve, so quite some time ago. And the, if anything with a consultant, I think you're going to get more public engagement. Because as part of that study, there will be public engagement, public, you know, of, you know, an open workshop or something like that. We will ensure that as part of that study, the public is engaged. And it's not just members of the community that are, that are focused only on the downtown. And users that are only coming down to downtown, whether it's employees. We're going to have potentially, you know, people participating in this process, you know, even in our, in our meetings with the ad hoc committee, we had one member of the public attend. And just because there's only one member there, they could easily contact the members of council that were on that committee to, to provide their, their opinion. So staff, staff support the committee's recommendation to, to hire the consultant. And as Counselor Meredith has indicated, once we have a consultant, consultant's going to be looking at supply versus demand. They're going to be looking where, where are the parking lots that, you know, we, we generated the most revenue from? So maybe those are the ones that we focus on having machines at. Should we be looking at, you know, free parking on King, you know, should the lot still remain the same? And there's also the discussion about boat launch, because the boat launch is also part of this as well, because that's parking. So there's a whole gambit of items that we'll be looking at as part of the, the RFP, if, if council does choose to go this route for us to, to include. So that way we do include public engagement, because you, you are right. It is important that the public is included as part of this process. Thank you.
Follow up?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to also ask again if we have reached out to other municipalities to do that before a consultant. And also if the data was not able to be presented to the committee, how is an external consultant going to be able to gain where we have the most revenue from if there's no data to support that?
Madam Chair, so we, we have data that shows what machines generated what income. So we do have that data there. We can contact surrounding municipalities, but each municipality is going to be different. So the committee did present various other communities that had parking programs. That was one of the tasks that the committee passed in, in one of their meetings was tasking each other to do some research and various municipalities came back. You know, for example, Penetang's parking program and what they're looking at is very different than ours. Our downtown is very connected to our waterfront, whereas theirs is, is not. So it's, it's hard to find exact comparables to Midland. And if you have a consultant, they'll be able to pull that data that we do have and provide a, a solid data recommendation to council. So it's, it's, it's interesting. The committee, each one of the committee members had a different want and a different ask. And if, and as, as Counselor Meredith indicated, we were kind of spinning our tires at these meetings. So this will now provide, have, have a professional give that recommendation to council on what the parking program should look at, should look like.
Thank you. I'm hesitant to support something with spending money in order to get more money out of our taxpayers. It doesn't make sense to me at this budget cycle to do this, but I would like to split one into from three, so we can vote on those separately.
So we have a motion to split?
I can prepare a motion, yep.
Okay. Can we continue with other counselors that have comments? Counselor Major?
Through Deputy Mayor Prost. I realize, I think we're going to end up getting consultants. And I'll give you the reason why I want the consultants to do, show up in the winter when we have snow and be downtown to see exactly, like, when you park. Going to meters, not meters. Show up in March when the slush is there and the sidewalks are frozen. Actually, I'd like to see the consultants come down and watch them clean the main street. And maybe show up at the Butter Tart Festival. Like, I was on another committee and the consultants rolled into Midland in July and did their, their spiel. And then I looked at one of the consultant, I said, you know, we get snow in the winter. So we broke for lunch. He went and looked at a couple of spots I told him to and he come back. He says, because he lived in Toronto. And he turned down a couple of thoughts that he had, because it's Midland in July. And that's really, if we get consultants, I want them to be four seasons up here, not roll through town in August and think everything's great. Like, let them go down there with their galoshes on and tramp through the snow. Thank you.
Counselor Patel?
Thank you Deputy. It's through you Deputy. I just, I'm part of the committee and I just got added maybe for maybe three meetings. There's been some great ideas shared, but like the report says, talks have stalled. We're kind of going in loops. We're not coming to any kind of resolution. When Mr. Smiley was on board, he did present a presentation about implementing parking meters and signage. But there was no formal, I guess, what I should say, agreement reached or a path forward to bringing in some kind of resolution. So I've been through about, I guess, three, four, and every meeting is basically like my first meeting. So I think we have to leave it to the professionals and let them do the study. I know it's going to cost us money, which, which is not a good thing, but we're not professionals in finding out what, what, what we need to spend and what we need to bring in. We're just counselors. So I know what it costs for my business per parking spot. And I said that in the committee that for, for our business, it costs us five hundred and sixty dollars per parking spot per year. That's what I've told the committee. I laid that out. So I'm sure the town has a cost. And the longer we delay this, the more our ratepayers are going to pay for this down the road for the lost revenue and continuing of the upkeep of the parking. So I'm in favor of doing the study. Hopefully it's not fifty thousand. The ask is fifty, but hopefully it's not. It's below. And what I've learned is every township has different plans because they have different needs. So we had a study for Owen Sound and they shared the cost with the BIA, the township. The BIA collects the money. So they have different needs. So they've come up with the solution and Midland has a different need. So I, I'm in agreement that this is our way forward to kind of come up with a solution. And with the ad hoc committee, I, I like to continue it, but I don't know if, if that's the right path forward. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just to Counselor Major. So that's one reason why the, the motion is worded the way it was. When staff were at the meeting, we're originally discussing this motion. We were, we recommended to the committee that it be included in the, in the twenty twenty five budget. Counselor Meredith is, is actually the committee member who said, you know what? No, let's, let's, let's get this done as soon as we can. Which is why it's, it's been, the recommendation has it coming from the twenty twenty four reserves. Because the sooner we get the parking study started, then the consultants can come and see in the winter. If we waited until twenty twenty five, then, then they may not be here for that. So that's one reason why the, the, the recommendation that the committee passed was, was for twenty twenty four. And then just in terms of Counselor Patel's comments, with, with, with the consultant providing the recommendation to, to council. That's one reason why staff put their recommendation in there to, to dissolve the committee is because they're going to come and directly present that information to the, to council for, for their decision. So the committee did request as part of that motion to, to be extended to the end of twenty twenty five. But that's why we, we put that motion in place to, to dissolve the committee as, as if a consultant's hired, then they're the ones who are going to present that to council.
Counselor Major, follow up?
Yeah, that's good if they're going to come up in the winter, because it's important for them to see down there, because when they did the big dig, they didn't bother putting curbs in, they put bollards in. And to see how much trouble it is to clean up around the bollards. It just, it just that way that they get a real picture of, of the, if we go back to, to meters and that, just the struggle sometimes during the winter months to get to the meter, to pay. So I'm happy they're coming in the winter. And if you need me down there, give me a call.
Mayor Gordon?
Thank you through your deputy. You know, we tried to do this on our own in the past. And we, you know, we ended up with, we just finished abandoning at significant expense. Something that we tried to do our own research on and to come up with this fantastical model where we're going to make a million bucks a year. And, you know, we spent a lot of money putting the equipment in. You know, the, the, the public rebelled against it and rejected it for, you know, valid reasons. And now we pulled it all out and we're eating it. And we'll be selling things on ten cents on the dollar. And we've abandoned revenue now for a full year. So I don't think there's any, I think the lesson to learn from the past is not to repeat it. So I think it's time to get the experts in, since it's been since twenty twelve. They have no skin in the game, no emotional attachments, no axes to grind about the past, you know, which you hear a lot of, you know, from folks that are clearly not happy with the way it, it rolled out. And, you know, reminding everyone that we've had paid parking in Midland for decades, like forever. You know, we also had some free options. We had paid parking and right now we have nothing. So we really need that unbiased review of parking costs and the revenue options. And to provide us with options and how we can either lose less money, which is always my objective, break even. Or perhaps, dare I say, even make some revenue that we can start adding to our, that poor parking reserve that we need for maintenance, insurance, the taxes we pay for these, for this space, the lighting on it, line painting, everything. So, I mean, we could try and roll it ourself again. And amongst us, we could probably come up with some viable phase one parking solutions. I know I have one right now. I could ramble on right now. I think we could put into play tomorrow. That would probably not even cause a mutiny in the town. But that's just me. And I think we've, we've exhausted that and we shouldn't try and solution this. I think let's, it's a small price to pay considering the amount we've invested and lost. Not only in the, the capital, but also in the revenues this year. And quite frankly, in some of the faith from our community on our ability to get parking right. So I think getting the, you know, the consultants in is money well spent, even though I'm loathe to just throw money at consultants willy nilly, because we do have capable staff. But I think this is one area where it's beyond them. And, you know, to their credit, they're saying we should be looking at a consultant. This committee of well-meaning, good-hearted business owners downtown that we formed in residence, even they see the value in this. So I have no intention of, you know, blocking the dissolution of the parking committee. I think it's, it's lived its, its requirement. Didn't get a lot of public engagement as we'd hoped. And I think the, the study and the consultants who do this for a living will do a better job at getting that engagement and bring back options for this council to consider. Everything on the whole spectrum. The only thing I would expect wouldn't come back to us as part of this would be continue doing what we're doing, which is fully subsidized parking on taxes. To me, that's just, that's not responsible. That shouldn't be one of the terms of reference. There needs to be something else where we at least lose less money, whether it's permit systems. You know, simple parking permits and heavy enforcement and expensive fines. This is the stuff that they're going to look at. And then they'll come back to us with recommendations and we can choose to accept them, modify them or reject them. But I fully support all three recommendations here. I want to thank the, the ad hoc parking committee for their, their hard work on this. Really tough. We couldn't get it right last term and we're still struggling to get it right now. So it's almost unfair to expect that little ad hoc committee to do what, what we couldn't collectively do. But I think they've done their level best. I want to thank them for their service and I support all three of these options.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Prior to presenting the motion to divide the recommendations, would you mind just reading the original motion? And also the mover and seconder of the original motion has to agree to suspend the rules and to allow the division, to allow the motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion is that staff report CSR dash twenty twenty, oh, I, I am on, aren't I? Sorry. Dash twenty twenty four dash eighty ad hoc parking committee update dated September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four be received. And number one, that council supports the ad hoc parking committee's request to retain the services of an external consultant to complete a review of the parking program within the town of Midland. And that the twenty twenty four budget be amended to include funding with an upset limit of fifty thousand dollars for the study funded from the parking reserve. And number three, that the ad hoc, the ad hoc parking committee be dissolved. I think we've already had discussion. We have a, we have a motion on the floor to split this motion, which I'll, so the, the first one was moved by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Ball. So this, to be able to split the motion, both, two people have to agree. We have it moved by Counselor Ball. Do we have a second or Counselor Meredith? The motion is that council suspend the rules of procedure to allow for the recommendations as set out in item seventeen point one CSR dash twenty twenty four dash eighty ad hoc parking committee update to be considered separately. We have any questions or comments, any further? No, we're done? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? It's defeated.
Did we just defeat, to split it? Okay. Thank you. So now that
Yes, we're back to the original motion. You've all heard the original motion. All in favor?
Can I just suspend this for a second? So when we're, when we were discussing, you know, questions, you really need to take a look around, because I still had questions after you, you presented the motion back from, from the clerk. Or, yeah. So I still had questions. So you really need to, to take a look around and see if there's any further questions after Mayor Gordon spoke, because I did have questions. And another motion possibly. So anyways, I think it's late now, but can I, can I have the floor? So?
Through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Meredith. The motion is still on the floor. The chair has called for the vote, but you still have time to make a comment.
Thank you. So through your Deputy Mayor Prost. So I just want to make some, another comment on, on what Counselor Ball, with the data. And, and some of the information that we got from the, the ad hoc committee. And, and the reason why the data wasn't, we did, we did receive data. But the problem with the data was there was fluctuating fees that, you know, parking, recharging went from a dollar to, to free parking, to seniors free parking. And so it was very, very, well, it wasn't accurate. And, and put on top of that with a failing machine in the complaints. That's why, you know, a consultant was recommended. Now, coming back to the consultant, you know, twenty five to thirty thousand dollars for the committee was money well spent. I'd rather spend thirty now and say, okay, a parking program is, is, is good to have, to put in place and we're going to spend, you know, we had seventy machines before, I believe. We don't have to start out with seventy. Maybe the, the consultant will say, you only need thirty five right now, right? Or whatever that is. So we have the ability to, to make that decision. So what I want to do is, you know, there's an upset uptick here of fifty thousand dollars. And I would, I would like to take this money. The twenty twenty three had, the audit for twenty twenty three is coming to council in, probably in, in October. So I would like it to take the, the funds from this, the surplus of the twenty twenty three funds. The tax-supported surplus and to pay for this study. And we could actually cap it at thirty five thousand versus the fifty. And if And if, and if staff needs more money when they go out for an RFP, then they can come back to, to council. So we could put a cap on it if, if we're not comfortable with the 50. And, or we, you know, we say, okay, staff go out and get a RFP and hopefully they get something, you know, less. But I believe, in speaking with Mr. Ferguson, he believes it'll probably be upwards of $40,000. A $10,000 was just there as a, as a buffer. So although, do I want to spend $40,000 on a consultant? No. But do I want to spend 500,000 on parking meters? And we get the data and it's saying that, yeah, we're, we're gonna be in a deficit of $200,000, even if we have parking meters that, that work. So that's the information that I'm looking for. And, and to make the right decision. So to spend a little bit now, you know, instead of making a huge mistake down the road like, like we did in the past. So. So part two of this, if, if it's not split, so I, I, I would, I would recommend that, you know, we, we can cap that at a certain price, a certain amount, and then staff can come back to council if need be. And honestly, I don't, I don't need to, we don't really need to rush this. I personally don't. Parking right now in our downtown core, there, there isn't any problem with, with free parking right now. Merchants that don't have very many complaints. So, but, you know, going into 2026 budget, I'm, I'm sure that we want to have something nailed down. So we have a year and a bit. We're just gonna fast forward this in 2024, get an RFP, and then hopefully get something by the fall, I imagine. So of 2025. So. So can I amend the motion of the, the funding of the $50,000 to come from the 2023 surplus of the tax-supported surplus in 2023?
Through you Deputy Mayor to Counselor Meredith. Just to confirm, you can propose a, an amending motion. But as far as the wording, I was gonna turn to our CFO, just to make sure that we have, I have the proper wording in the amendment of where the funds will come from.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Meredith. Everybody hear me okay? Yes. Okay, great. Just on that. So yes, if, if you're looking to amend the, the amount to say 35 or 40,000, we, we certainly can do that. I mean, there, there is a risk that we would have to come back to council should that RFP come in higher. But certainly that is council's decision. So the $50,000 upset limit was based on recent tenders that we have had for, I would say, similar sized consulting work, such as our development charge study, which is, so that's where that limit came from. On the funding, so the funding was recommended to come from the parking reserve. Really, that's because, you know, we're, we're looking at doing a study to help offset those costs, right? So the parking reserve was that recommended source of funding. Now, we certainly could take Counselor Meredith's suggestion and apply the 2023 surplus to this project. However, that surplus amount hasn't yet been reported to council and council hasn't yet decided where to put that surplus, which ultimately goes into reserves. And so if council decides today to fund this project from the parking reserve, I can commit to council that when that report comes forward, likely in November, the recommendation will be to assign a portion of that surplus back to that reserve essentially. So essentially, we're achieving the same result as being suggested. But today, I don't have sort of that, that, that number to, to confirm. It's also much cleaner from an audit perspective if today I have a very clean motion that says that that funding for this project become, come from that parking reserve. So in short, my recommendation would be to leave the motion as is. However, if you wanted to adjust the amount downwards, we, we certainly could do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mayor Gordon. Thank you CFO Baron. So basically, you're saying it doesn't really matter the, whether it comes from the reserve or the, where'd you go? You left. Oh, there you are. Basically, what you're saying that doesn't matter. It's coming from 23 or 2024 or the, or the, the parking reserve. You're gonna replenish either one. So, so that's what I'm hearing. So that doesn't really matter. It's kind of a wash either way. Okay. Thank you.
Any more comments or questions? Mayor Gordon.
I guess more of a question, or maybe I guess I'm really a comment because we're not supposed to engage in back and forth debate. But, you know, I guess there, I don't really see the value in reducing this upset limit of 50. You know, staff have clearly heard that we want them to spend as little as possible. I have every faith that they will. If the market requires it, you know, if it comes in at 40 and we put a tripwire in front of us, then it just delays us going to approve it. To Counselor Major's point, you know, we want these people coming out doing their study through at least a couple of seasons, the sloppy, disgusting one that's coming. And then the spring, you know, which is more like summer. So I think the sooner we get on this, the better. And I, and if you're, if the intention was hypothetically that if, you know, the, if they came in at 42,000 and we put an upset at 37, for example, you know, if you wouldn't vote for the 42, then we're kind of euchred. Like, what are we gonna do then? We don't have any. So I think if the idea is that you support the concept of having a consultant do this work, we're putting this upset limit at 50, you know, presumably you would support a consultant at whatever the price is, the fair market value that we get. Unless there is a magic line in the sand that you won't spend more than, right now it's 50, based on what we're gonna pass. I don't know the semantics of moving it down and just delaying it, having it come back to us. I don't know if there's any thing to be gained from that. I'm trying to grab a mind around where the gain would be. So maybe you could help me out with that. Because otherwise, if, if you can convince me, then I'd support lowering it. But I just don't know why that would make any difference.
Thank you. There's, I get your rationale. I'm just thinking for, you know, if there's a $10,000, you know, left on the table, it's gonna go into reserve, right? So instead of it coming back to the taxpayer. Well, it, it left the reserve and then it'll go back into the reserve. But then I'm trying to get it off of the 2025 or the 2020, 2023 to the 23. At the end of the day, it's, it's apples to apples. So, but that's basically, where's that excess of, we, we pull out 50, but we're not pulling it out. We're only pulling out what we, what we're spending, right? So. So let's just call the question and, and we're good. Thank you. But I, I felt that I needed to have that discussion. Thank you.
So we have the original motion on the floor. I presume I don't have to read it over again? I do? Okay. Oh, so it's the original motion. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We're on to 17.2 CSR 2024 dash 83 Joint OBC Building Services Agreement with the Town of Penetang Waseen. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Major, Mayor Gordon. The motion is the staff report CSR 2024 dash 83 Joint OBC Building Services Agreement with the Town of Penetang Waseen dated September 25th, 2024 be received. And one, that council approve the draft agreement and that council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement and that bylaw 2024 dash 50 be approved and bylaws 2021 dash 55 and 2017 dash 2021 and 2015 dash 23 be repealed. And I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Prost. I asked for this report to be pulled. And my questions were, on page two, it states some of the changes in the agreement include a reallocation of staff time of the two towns to be, and then it goes on to the percentages. I, I was curious to know how much change in those percentages. I'll just use the chief building official, Penetang Waseen 30, Midland 70. What was it previously?
Through you Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor McDonald. Yeah, previously for the CBO, it was, it was the same actually for that one. I could go through the rest. The deputy CBO changed. It's, it was lowered 10%. Previously, it was 70%. And the inspector was increased to 35% and it was 20% previously.
I'm sorry. I had trouble hearing you.
The, the deputy CBO was 70% previously. Yeah. And the building inspector was 20% previously.
It was, if I may, Deputy Mayor, was that to reflect the actual happening previously?
Uh, yes, we've, how we came up with those percentages, we took the actual hours worked from 2021 to 2023. And determined that, determined the hours spent in Penetang Waseen. And then the total full-time employee also increased from 1.2 to 1.25.
Thank you. And I, I only have one other question. The extension date and of January 2027, is that for any particular, it just seemed odd, 2027, January?
That aligns with the IBW extension. So when that gets renewed, if there's any changes to wages or any other changes that need to be reflected in the shared service, shared services, we could do that at that time.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Mayor Gordon.
I just want to commend staff for all the time and effort to negotiate this. This has been going on for quite some time. And a lot of back and forth negotiations, trying to make it so that, you know, Penetang Waseen gets really good value out of this partnership, the shared relationship, but Midland's not carrying the water. So the cost recovery is baked into this. An equitable share of the time and effort of, of the shared staff is in here. This is a mutually beneficial agreement. This isn't one of the ones where, you know, one's party benefits more than the other. There was a lot of back and forth and it's really awesome to see this thing signed off. Penetang Council has passed this. It's ready to go in effect. The only last little bit was for it to come before us and then it can get ready to enact. So I just wanted to thank senior staff because I know the, the C-suite folks were really busy in the negotiations and our CBO and team for finding this amazing cost-sharing initiative with our two towns working together and that, you know, sharing is caring and, and working collaboratively without fully smashing us together in an amalgamation, which is a whole other conversation. We're doing these little things and they really matter. So I'm really glad to see this come before us. I know it's been a long time coming.
Seeing no other hands up. You've heard the motion. All in favor? That's carried. 17.3 CSR 2024 dash 84 Records and Information Management Policy. The staff report CSR 2024 dash 84 Records and Information Management Policy dated September 25th, 2024 be received. And that the proposed records and information management policy attached to this report be adopted. Could I have a mover and a seconder to put on the floor? Counselor East and Counselor Meredith. I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Was it you, Counselor McDonald, who pulled this? Would you like to start?
Yes. It's pretty simple questions, I believe. I'm, if I may, through you Deputy Mayor Prost. My comment was, was there no record and an information management policy in the past?
Through you Deputy Mayor Prost. Short answer, no, there was not one in the past. Like we did with the routine disclosure policy a couple of months ago. We've been employing the methods, but there's been no official policy. So we're just getting up to date on policies that we need.
And if I may, I'm just curious, how close does this new policy actually to the method that's being employed now? And, and then I have one other question. But do you want to deal with that one first?
So yeah, so as previously stated, what we're doing now is basically what is in the policy. We're just making it more formal.
Thank you. Glad to hear that. On page two, the scope, it says this policy does not apply to information or data stored on backup servers as backups are only intended for use in a disaster recovery. I, I had trouble comprehending why. I guess you'd never go there, records, you're, you don't go into your backup? Is that what it's saying?
Through you Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor McDonald. Yeah, that's basically what it's saying. It would be strictly for disaster recovery if there was something like a hack or a breach. All of the records should be filed in the appropriate folders or, in our case, SharePoint. So we wouldn't need to go into the backup servers to get any active files that we have.
What, if you never go in there, why would you need the backups?
Again, in case there's some kind of lake breach, like a hack of our, our system. And if they were to get a hold of our files and hold them for any particular reason, then we would need to access our backup.
Heaven forbid. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. 17.4 CSR dash 2024 dash 85 Midland Fire Department Feasibility Study. Executive. The staff report CSR 20 dash 2024 dash 85 Midland Fire Department Feasibility Study Executive Steering Committee and Terms of Reference dated September 25th, 2024 be received. And that council approve the fire service executive steering committee. And that council approve the terms of reference for the executive steering committee. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Patel and Mayor Gordon. So open the floor for discussion. Counselor Meredith.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Prost. I, I did pull this report. I had a few questions here. First of all, the feasibility study, was a joint budget of 65K for each Midland and Penetang? Or is this the total combined? That was my number one. Has the Lumex group quoted on the, on the cost of the feasibility studied already? And then the third question is, is the wording on the reporting structure on number seven? Which I'm just trying to scroll down here. There is, it states there should be a significant requirement for it states there should be a significant requirement for funding. I want to change the word significant to any change of funding, which I could pull it up. I could read the whole thing. So I believe it's under the terms of reference, reporting structure. And number seven states, should there be a significant requirement for funding beyond the jointly approved budget, the project lead in consulting, in consultation with the executive steering committee shall submit a report to council requesting additional funds for overtures. So that word significant, I'm not comfortable with. I believe it should be replaced with any, just because I don't know everybody's definition of significant. I believe it differs. So that is what I'm thinking. If anybody wants to comment on that?
Through you Deputy Mayor to Counselor Meredith, to answer your questions in order. The feasibility study of 65,000 is a joint amount. So it's split half and half. The Lumex group was the group that was awarded the contract. So therefore, yes, they did bid on the contract. And the wording that was used when we use significant, significant is a term that's used when we're looking at the procurement part of policy. Anything over 10% wouldn't be considered significant. That's where the wording came from. What I will do is remind you that this is a joint committee and the terms of reference in this document has also gone through Penetang Council on September 11 and approved. So if you wanted changes, I would have to go back to Penetang Council to make those changes again, to change the wording that you were uncomfortable with and hope to see that they weren't uncomfortable with your change.
Thank you. Through Deputy Mayor Prost. They may have missed that. That's mine. So they may agree with me that any is would be agreeable, but you know, I will stick to my you know, being not comfortable with that word. So if council chooses otherwise, then the majority vote that they're fine with this, then, then so be it. But that's where I stand right now. So, thank you.
Any further comments or questions, Mayor Gordon?
I appreciate you pulling that out, Counselor Meredith. That does make sense, but I do find solace that the word significant is tied to 10%. So it's not as ambiguous as the word would normally be without those constraints. So, you know, we're all hearing to 10% increase on 65K, $6,500. You know, if it's over that, they got to come back to council and ask for more money. So I don't see that as being a showstopper. It's almost immaterial in the grand scheme of things. So I, where I appreciate where you're coming from and your diligence on it, I wouldn't want to derail this process and send it back to Penetangwishing and for the sake of semantics again. So I'm content with the way this is and I look forward to your participation on this.
Follow up.
Yeah, thank you. I do. You know, you may say it's 10%, but I don't see them in definitions where significant is states it's 10%. So if we want to add significant to the definitions that it's a maximum of 10%, then I'd be comfortable with that. But there's, you know, is that just, is that just a, you know, when we use significant, is that, is that a maximum 10%? Is that, is that common practice? Because I don't see it in here. So to me, it could, it could run, you know, higher than 10%. So I'm not comfortable with it, but I'll stand by. I don't think it's semantics unless it was defined here as significant maximum is 10%. Thank you.
Madam CFO, just before we go to Madam CFO, I think we've, it's on the public record. We've had this conversation. Again, any edit to this document kicks it back to Penetangwishing. We're talking about this as a public record. It doesn't ever get erased. We've, we've defined significant and all Madam CFO confirmed this, or CEO, sorry, confirmed this, but significant's 10%. So if it's not written in here, we all know it's 10%. This is all going to happen during our term. If that 10% becomes 18%, then we all know that something's happened. So again, I don't, I wouldn't want to mess this up since it has been defined. Perhaps, you know, there's more Madam CFO you could, you could add on.
Through, through you, through the Deputy Mayor to Counselor Meredith. So the, our procurement by, our procurement bylaw, I guess it is, has defined when we can, what percentage we can go over and what percentage we do have to, have to come back to council. So it is defined in our procurement bylaw and we, we do, we are abiding by that. I would just note that I believe that Penetang Council meets once a month. So this would actually delay the, they, it would go to Penetang Council in three weeks and then have to come back to our council after. So it could delay this by potentially five weeks. So just to note that anything that is going to be over and above our procurement bylaw that allows us to, to go outside of that scope or cost would have to come back to councils at that point in time. And as well, it would go to the committee. So being a part of the committee as well, you would, you would have the understanding of any of the changes in costs that would occur.
Follow up.
Okay. I didn't know if the public record, sorry, through Deputy Mayor Prost, I wasn't aware if it was in public record, then, then that is basically a guideline that we go by. And I didn't realize that our procurement is defined as significant, which is up to 10% increase. So that's good to know. Thank you.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you Deputy. Through you Deputy, I just want to say it's great that we're going to do this study. We got a good, I guess, committee members in there with Counselor Meredith, Gordon and our worship and Deputy Mayor and senior team, Ms. Bun. So I'm hoping we'll get a positive result. And as Mayor Gordon mentioned, our share would be only 3,500, the 10%. So which is no, but 3,500, the significant amount. Yeah. If there is a significant change, which is very minor if we're going to achieve, you know, future savings. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments. You've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Onto number 18. Notice of, notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion? Mayor Gordon.
Thank you. That the pedestrian crossings at the signalized intersections on King Street downtown between Bay Shore Drive and Young Street be reprogrammed to automatically activate the pedestrian crossing at each intersection while still maintaining the existing programming to activate the AODA audible calls on the push button with the push and hold function. We will discuss that three weeks.
No more notices of motion coming forward tonight? Okay, on to 19, general announcements. Mayor Gordon, or should you just go first?
The shirt should give it away and the orange that you see up here. And I proudly put the bill in billboard. That's for the news. I am wearing my Every Child Matters shirt tonight and reminding all that national, the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation recognizes the tragic legacy of residential schools and the missing children and the families left behind, as well as the survivors of these institutions. Every year, September 30th marks the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and it honors the children who never returned home and the survivors of these schools, as well as their families and the communities. Midland is not untouched from these. Our very own past Deputy Mayor was a 60s scoop survivor and was still authoring his book at the time of his passing. The town of Midland will recognize this day with the lowering of flags to half mask at all the town facilities. And there are many community events around at Chigamig, the Waypoint Health Hub, the Georgian Bay Native Friendship Center, the Metis offices, Georgian Bay Metis. There are events all over the place where I'd encourage you, if you have the time during that day, your workday, to attend and participate and learn. Those are the most achievable truth and reconciliation calls to action that anybody can make, and that's to just be part and listen and learn. So I'll be doing that and I invite any of you to join us at our flag ceremony as well as throughout that day. And proudly will be wearing my orange shirt that day as well. And of course, I'm wearing it tonight, not only for this announcement, but because this is the last council meeting before the September 30th day. Thank you.
Counselor Major.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost, I just want to remind everyone this weekend that the Midland Sports Hall of Fame 2024 induct ceremony Saturday, September 28 at 7 o'clock. The athletes going in are Kenny Edgar, Joey Foster, Summer DeChambeau. Builders are Don Foster, Frank Woodley, Jamie Robillard. And the teams are the 1957 Midland Lions, the Langel Team, 1989 Midland Braves, the Cross Team, and special recognition to Dr. Richard Thomas. And I've gone to a few of them and it is a really awesome night in Midland. And anyone going up to Rec Center can go into the Hall of Fame up there and look at some of the old and neat memorabilia in there. So I hope people go on Saturday night. Thanks.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Well, the Midland Mural Festival is this weekend, so that's exciting. First annual one. Hopefully it'll be a big success and we can continue that on. The Midland Cultural Center is also having an event on Saturday evening, 7:00 PM. It's their fall fundraiser, $20 a ticket. And it features all local artists. So that'll be fun. And I also want to congratulate Quest Art on their fundraiser last weekend. It was a phenomenal event and I was really excited to be a part of it. So I just wanted to congratulate on them. It was packed. It was thriving. The MCC looked just, I think, as they imagined it would be when they built it, just a thriving community event. So, thanks.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks Ian. I proudly have, I was the winner of one of the art slam pictures or paintings from last year that is displayed in my office. So anybody that comes to my office, you can see that was last year. I didn't win one this year. Another thing to do, in case you're looking for something to do on the 30th, after you're finished with all your truth and reconciliation activities, is you can join the Curling Club for their open house from six until I think at least seven. I think it's longer than that. I've got it in my calendar from six to seven. Of course, I'll be there. But come on by and check out the Curling Club because the ice is going in and it's going to be a great season. There's always room for membership and they have Discover Curling and Kids Curling. It's just a good old time. So that's also on Monday, the 30th from six. I'll call it six to eight or something. I'm sure it is. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. I just would like to mention that the Midland is hosting their first, I think it's their first mural festival downtown this Saturday, the 28th. It sounds pretty exciting to me. There's music and we can watch artists at work and you can either do a guided tour or a self-guided tour. They'll give you the printed guide to look at the existing murals that we think we know where they all are, but it's always interesting to find resurfaced that was, yeah. So hope to see you there. I think it starts at 10. Check the website. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, we'll move to number 20. Motion to close Committee of the Whole and to resume formal council session. Can I ask for a mover and a second or actually I have one. Counselor Meredith and Counselor Major, that the Committee of the Whole rise and report. All in favor? That's carried.
Welcome back to the formal session. So I've got to hear a motion moved by Counselor McDonald, second by Counselor Ball, that the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole for the meeting of September 25, 2024 be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Up next, move by Counselor Reese, second by Counselor Major, that the following bylaws, that being bylaw 2024-48 authorize the appointment of Ryan McGee as a building inspector. Bylaw 2024-49 removing part lot control on block 14 within registered plan of subdivision 51M 12-1254. That's more Caitlin building, by the way, in case you didn't know. Bylaw 2024-50 authorize the entering into an agreement with the town of Penetangwishing for the provision of Ontario Building Code Enforcement Services under repeal bylaws 2021-55, 2017-21, and 2015-23. And finally, bylaw 2024-51, recover expenses for response to incidents and accidents, damage to municipal property be passed and enacted. Any questions, counsel? Counselor Major.
So I kind of struggled with that one trying to figure it out. So Public Works gets called out. So they're not doing whatever they planned on doing that day to go to an accident. So who are we billing?
So that, we actually have passed that now. This is more the formal part where we're just actually making the bylaws, the discussion.
Oh, later?
No, no one pulled that one. That wasn't pulled. So we never really debated it. However, for the, you're new and normally we don't do this in here, but I think we can break with procedure if it'll get brow beaten by the clerk. And perhaps because it wasn't pulled, we could have, I guess it would be Mr. Ferguson. Would you speak to that recover? We don't have Julie with us, so. Hey, somebody can speak to it. That's fine. Maybe you can just give us a high level of who's getting the invoice? Are we billing the OPP? Or are we billing someone's insurance company? I think it would help all of us and Counselor Major understand better the intent of this recover expenses to response to incidents and accidents and damage to municipal property.
Absolutely. Through you, Your Worship to Counselor Major. No problem. In the case where there's third-party liability, so we're called out to an accident and someone is deemed at fault, that's where we would do the billing. The person found at fault for the accident or damage to our property, that is the person who ends up being billed generally through their insurance programs.
Just hopefully they got insurance.
Thanks. And that speaks to the money that we're leaving on the table that I kind of just spoke to at a high level in the consent agenda review. We never were recovering these things in the past. So we were just eating them and having to fix stuff and put it on the tax bill. Now we're going after these people's insurance, to your point, if they have it. And if there isn't, there's other mechanisms and trying to get it off the shoulders of our taxpayers. So that being said, we got that byline in front of us. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, move by Counselor Patel, second by Counselor East, that bylaw 2024-52 being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of this regular council meeting with closed session be held, held on September 25, 2024, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. And the motion of the night, move by Counselor Ball, second by Counselor Major, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at 7:51 PM. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.